Health and Safety Committee, July 25, 2024.
I call the Health and Safety Committee meeting to order, oh my, at 6 o'clock PM. Members present are C. Aaron Sharick, James B., and myself, Vicky DeShaun as chair. First on the agenda is public participation. Anyone wishing to speak, please come to the podium, state your name and address.
Bill Stuckert, 205 North Spring Street. I know this is not on your agenda tonight, but it is in your open projects, and that's the marijuana dispensaries issue. I just want to state my opposition to the marijuana cannabis business. Since the very beginning of the human race, evil and good have been at war. Evil people trying to convince good people that evil things are okay. Sadly, because of their cunning and conniving abilities, evil people are too often successful at getting their evil desires accepted and legalized. This happened here in Ohio with a public vote last November to legalize both the recreational use of marijuana products and abortion of an unborn child. I believe many people who voted yes to approve those issues regret doing so. The issue that you, City Council, have at hand now is whether or not to allow marijuana products to be sold in the city of Bucyrus. There is a longstanding slogan used in the War on Drugs to help deter our young people from becoming involved in the use of illegal drugs. That slogan is "Just Say No." Now is your time to shine, Council members. As our community leaders, this is your opportunity to be good examples to everyone by using that slogan and just say no to marijuana sales in Bucyrus. You cannot stop the use of marijuana in our community anyhow, but you can prevent it from being so easily acceptable, accessible. Don't let the money that the city could possibly receive through taxes be your deciding factor. You will likely be disappointed with the revenue that the city actually receives. So I am urging you, please, just say no to marijuana business and sales in Bucyrus. To all good citizens of Bucyrus, wake up out there. Don't just sit back and be quiet. It's time to speak out. Let the City Council know that you do not want marijuana business in your community. Thank you.
Any other public participation for the Health and Safety Committee?
Good evening, Council members. My name is Victoria Caldwell. I'm the Executive Director of the Humane Society serving Crawford County, and I have some comments concerning changes and alterations you're making to the animal ordinances starting with 505.01. I'll make this as brief as possible. My first point of order would be referring to 505.031 with your feral cat programs. I believe it to be irresponsible for a trap neuter release program to not include a testing program for the two diseases that we find most prevalently in our cat populations, and that would be feline immunosuppressant virus as well as feline leukemia, both of which are deadly viruses, both of which can be tested for. Animals that are positive can or cannot exhibit signs of the disease. They pass this disease on through biting, feeding, and fighting and breeding. So if you have somebody that has a purposeful outdoor feeding station for feral cats, they could possibly be allowing even a neutered or spayed cat to pass these diseases on if they're not tested negative. These diseases are only detrimental to cats themselves. It is not, they are species-specific. They are not a disease that humans have to worry about. However, rabies is, and purposeful outside feeding of feral cats can bring in any number of possible rabid animals: raccoons, possums, skunks, coyotes, groundhogs, you name it. Any warm-blooded animal, including us, can be infected with rabies. I find it to be highly irresponsible of any trap neuter release program that they would not implement and City Council would not put into verbiage. It must be tested negative four before release. Okay? Also, Section D talks about...
Next question.
Yes, sir.
What's the approximate cost of that?
I only know what wholesale price is. I don't know what a veterinarian...
That's good.
I'm assuming most veterinarians are charging $45 to $50, but I'm also assuming that the trap neuter release programs are working with veterinarians to have a reduced fee.
And if one of those cats tests positive, are they destroyed?
If they're not destroyed, they can be managed if they're managed in a colony where there are just positive animals. However, if they're turned back onto the street with a positive test, they can go around infecting multiple animals. And I will tell you, and I don't want to be too graphically horrible with this, but when we find them on the streets, many times people call us and say, "This cat has been hit by a car," and it has not been hit by a car. It is writhing on the ground, under a bush or under a car, or in somebody's back porch, just struggling to breathe, because they die with blood and pus in their lungs and a fever of 103, 104 degrees. And it is a horrible way to die. And that's the kind of diseases that a positive animal will die of, not maybe, not if, but they will. And in the process, they will pass that on to other animals in our community, or other cats in our community. Let me, let me be clear. So I feel that it is of the utmost importance that if you're going to implement a program, which I think is a fantastic idea, don't get me wrong, I just feel it needs to be done with the utmost responsibility to our community with a provision in there for negative tests. My second point of order would be, Section D, it says no less than daily that the traps are checked. Most people that trap under the ODNR side of things check their traps at least twice a day. In the kind of weather we've had, 90 degrees plus, or when you're looking at 32 degrees or below, I feel it should be implemented that they're checked twice a day, or more, not no less than, because it is not humane to leave an animal in a cage with no water and no access. In fact, that's what I take animals on. If I find an animal that does not have access to food or water, that's one of the things under the ORC that I can confiscate. So I feel that it should be definitely something that City Council considers. I also, and many years ago, when Roger Moore was the City Council President, Roger and I had quite the public against us with some of these comments, and I do apologize, but I still feel the same way today after being at the Humane Society for over 16 years. I see the detrimental effects of purposely feeding outdoor cats. When you supplement their diets, you allow the females to have five or six kittens, where if they were fending for themselves, they may only have one or two. Of those five or six kittens, most of them will survive if they're being fed. If they're fending for themselves, one or two, the one or two may survive. So you can see already how you are compounding your very own problem and needing even more funds to trap neuter release. And it is a very emotionally charged issue. I understand that, but it's a people issue. It's not a cat issue. The need for trap neuter releases because people refuse to have their animals altered, and they don't see a problem with when they have to move from point A to point B, just opening the door and kicking them out and saying, "Well, it was nice seeing you." So we see these problems a lot in what I do. My other point...
Excuse me. Is there a section then in the 505.031 that makes reference to what you were just talking about that you want us to change, or add...
The, when you're, yes, I'm sorry. Just a moment. The, yeah, it would be just under, when they're talking about returning them back out into the community, you might put verbiage in there that says, "May only be returned if tested negative four."
Yes, yes, that I understood. That, that I did. But the last part where purposely feeding...
Oh, the supplemental feeding?
Yes.
505.06, nuisance conditions prohibited, and I feel that purposeful, or as I said, no person shall provide supplemental feeding for feral cats. And I'm sure my wording is maybe not correct, but you get the gist.
Sure. Is there, so Ms. Lewis was talking about the distinction between outdoor cats and feral cats, but there would be a, it would be difficult to distinguish if somebody was feeding their outdoor cats or purposely feeding feral, in my mind, but I don't know.
And that's, that's, that's the whole problem. That's the problem that the ORC has with cats versus dogs, because I can go onto a property where obviously there are multitudes of cats that are being fed. Oh, those aren't mine, but they're on your porch, or they're in your garage, or they're on your back patio. Yeah, but they're not mine. So at that point, the ORC has no guidelines. There's no guidelines whatsoever on cats. Now, the cities have ordinances for nuisance and that type of thing, which helps a little bit. When you get people complaining because their gardens are tore up and their porch furniture has been urinated over consistently for the past six weeks, and they can't do anything about it, you know, to me, that's a nuisance situation, and, and that's something that, you know, they, there are, I can't think of the word I want. There are things written into your ordinance that says that they should be, you know, given reparations for that. But how can you, how can you say somebody over here has four cats on their porch, "Oh, those aren't mine. I'm just feeding them because I feel sorry for them." So that is a huge situation. I don't know how you're going to wrap your brain around it or put it into words, but it's something to consider as you try to move forward, at least in my opinion. And also, when you say feral versus outdoor, the next time I get a feral tomcat in a trap, I'll call you all in, because you might as well have trapped me a boar coon and told me to get it out of that trap safely. A 15, 16-pound feral tomcat can kill you. They just don't know they can, and that's a good thing. We have had many individuals bitten over the years, myself included. Feral cats are nothing to play with. A cat bite is one of the most dangerous bites you can get from any domestic animal. If you do not seek medical attention immediately, and even when you do, septicism is a real issue. So when feral cats come into us, it is, you know, it's, it's, there's about three of us that handle them when they come in, because it is just that dangerous. That's the difference between a feral cat. It's wild. It's not just a cat that is living on its own and doesn't have an owner. It's a wild animal. And studies have shown that cats that are put outside fend for themselves and learn how to adapt to that feral side quicker than almost any other domestic animal. People think, "Oh, ferrets." No, if a ferret has been hand-raised and the ferret food fairy does not come feed them, they will starve. We just got a sugar glider in. You couldn't turn that outside. It would, it would not survive. Dogs come a close second. Some breeds better than others. German shepherds are pretty adept at figuring out how to live on their own. Chihuahuas, hm, they wouldn't make the winter in Ohio. So these are the things that, that we learn, that we know with the jobs that we do. But moving on, so I don't keep you all evening. I'm so sorry.
No.
Would be under rabies. 505.14, Section 4, Number F. A dog bitten by an animal known to be a, to be rabid should immediately be destroyed if the owner is unwilling to destroy the exposed animal. Strict isolation and observation of the animal in the Crawford County Humane Society? That is a hard no for me. We are not veterinary medical professionals. Rabid animals are something that could not only take out my whole kennel, but take out all of my employees as well. We are not professionally trained to handle a rabid animal, and I believe that it should be, they need to go to a veterinary medical professional to have that taken care of. I had questions about the, some of the verbiage as far as the police department or the, the city safety director is going to impound animals for three days. I don't know where you're going to keep them.
There's plenty of stuff.
Yeah, yeah. Well, there's plenty of room for cages in here. I mean, you could probably get, you could probably get 30 dogs in here.
That was probably put in there when we had a pound, right?
Yeah, I assume.
Well, the city does have, and I know you can't find it, and I'm looking into it myself, there is a contract with the Humane Society for help with those matters. That's why we are paid $1,500 a year by the city. Last year, there was an incident where a police officer impounded and then took it to us for care, custody, and control. And in between the time of the impounding and the time when the court finally made the decision, we had over $1,000 in bills. And I gave that to Neil just to show him this is, this is what could possibly incur in one single dog. This legislation is way outdated as far as understanding costs now. Typical vet visit is $400. So those are the type of things that we see. I did not bill him. I showed him what could have been, and, you know, if we'd had one or two more dogs under that, that would have way exceeded the $1,500 that the city pays us every year, which I'm not here to ask for more money. I'm just making a comment so that you understand kind of the apples-to-apples of the whole That's all I have. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. And I'd be glad to come at any time to discuss these things with you. I know a lot of this is not expertise of most people, but this is what I've done for 16 years and, and probably 20 years before that. So I would be glad to come and talk to you at any time. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Added to what Mrs. Caldwell had to say, I did have a conversation today with Darla Lewis, who's been coming and talking about the Trap Neuter and Return Program. I emailed to her a copy of the draft. She informed me that, she's thrilled with it. Wanted to thank the committee and Law Director Gurnard for the work that's been done so far on it. She also wanted me to inform the committee that for personal reasons, she has stepped down from directing the Trap Neuter and Return Program, and the program is now being taken over by Susan Fritz. So just that information for you. So it appears we have some more work to do, because, I mean, if we're going to do this...
Do it right.
Yeah, yeah.
But if we're gonna, if the animal's sick, are we gonna take it to a vet? I mean, obviously, she can't handle it out there.
Yeah, and so I don't know why, but there are two sections on rabies in here, and they mirror each other almost identically, so I'm not exactly sure what... But I suppose as far as the rabies part and what we do with dog bites and those types of things, that would be something that I can do some additional research and see what the Ohio Revise Code actually tells us we have to do, and then between talking with the Crawford County Dog Board and, and the Humane Society, come up with practically how this really works, and so that we're mirroring what, what's going on. And the changes as far as testing for feline, I didn't catch what the diseases were, but I'll find out. I mean, those are easy fixes.
That sounds logical, though, to test them while they're there.
Oh, for sure.
I would test them before I neuter them.
Well, that's what I, what she was going to say, yeah.
I'm like, I'd probably test them first.
And I assume that, yeah, that's probably what a vet would do.
Yeah. Okay. Mrs. Caldwell indicated that she'd be happy to come and talk to us again, so would we like to see when she's available?
I was gonna say, Brian might want to just get some notes from her, too.
Okay.
And then that way, if, if we don't have to force her up here...
Fine.
I, I know how busy they are out there.
So why don't you put together a draft and show it to her and have her go through it again?
Yeah, then I'll work with her and group with the...
Great.
...Cordy Dog Board and just see, because I don't know with the whole rabies, why there's two different sections and, I don't know. We'll figure some stuff out.
Okay.
Okay. We've turned it over to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, I'll entertain a motion.
Public participation, everybody.
Oh, I'm sorry. I guess I didn't ask if there was any more public participation. Excuse me. Thank you, Jim.
Ken Long, 625 South Spring Street. It's just a coincidence that we were just talking about cats, and now I'm here to talk about dogs. And so, oh, I guess we'll throw us all out here at the same time. I was bit back in March, and police were called, the warden was called, and I found out pretty quick that, you know, we have a screwed-up process as far as eliminating that, that threat to, to folks. The house in question is within 1,000 feet of the grade school building, which means there's going to be traffic in that vicinity, you know, kids going to school every day. So, you know, I think if, if I get bit, I think an eight-year-old girl could probably get bit, too. And the, the people have the dog, it's just a joke to them, to the point where they're freaking rude about the thing, "I'll be, I'll be kind." It's a lot worse than that. And so I'm, I'm just, I've talked, I've talked to the warden just today. I talked to Captain Walker just today, and neither one of them have a, have any teeth to, to do anything about, about issues like this, especially with something that is reoccurring. So here we are. So I'm, I'm looking for some, some relief, see what we can do. Because at the, at the end of the day, my goal is the peaceful enjoyment of somebody's property. And having a dog yapping, you know, 18 hours a day is not my idea of that. If they live down the country, five miles out of town, they can do whatever they want. They may bother some cows, but just not me. But, you know, if they're, if, if we're gonna live in the city, we probably got to have a little bit different thought process on what, what we allow. And the ordinances in place talk about a city warden, so it tells, it tells me that the, you know, this thing's antiquated, because there's not, there's not a city warden anymore.
And we did change that.
Okay.
Yes.
Is it, is it official change, or is it just in...
It's, well, it's in this draft, so no, it's not official.
Okay, that's fine. Well, then, there's, there's probably more things that probably should be drafted in there at the same time and, and run those things through. So that's why I'm looking for some, some help with this.
I'm trying to think, Ken, did I not give you a copy of...
Yes.
Okay. So have you had an opportunity yourself to look through it and mark up what changes you think?
There's, there's probably plenty of things. I'm, I have a real deep concern for colored bunnies and colored rabbits, too. That's in there, and just like Captain Walker said, I have not had that issue for a lot of, a lot of years, and so it's stuff like that that, it probably needs regroom. And I'll, and I'll be at first to admit, there's probably a million ordinances out there in Bucyrus, and trying to revamp all this stuff, it would physically, be physically impossible. But something that's a health and safety issue, like dog bites, and, you know, the, the dogs are back here in the yard right now, yapping, I'll guarantee that, on the backside of one of my properties, and that's a nuisance from it. My people, neighbors next door, they've called, they've complained, they've got, you know, the police has copies of reports, but unless they see the dog and he's barking so long for so many minutes, or whatever, they can't do anything with it, and that's just, that's just, it's not, it's not, it's not written correctly. Because if that dog was barking at the mayor's house, next door to the mayor's house, or whoever, they'd probably feel differently. Because it's not them, nobody cares. Well, I'm caring, so I want to, I want to stir this thing up a little bit and see what we can do with it.
So with, what I'm gathering is that the police are indicating that there's no, they have no teeth to grab on to, to...
That is correct.
Okay.
No person shall keep or harbor any animal or fowl so as to create an offensive odor, excessive noise, unsanitary conditions, and those types of things. Any animal which by biting or frequent and habitual barking disturbs the, or endangers the company or composure of the health of, or health of persons is declared to be nuisance. I mean, there's some of that in there, and it's minor misdemeanor, so non-jailable sanctionable fines, but, and I know, I don't know, but I know Ohio Revise Code has all kinds of stuff about dangerous dogs, and, and there's a process, and, and I, it's, I don't know. I would, I guess...
No, this, this is complicated. I'll be, I'll be at first to admit, I'll, I'll be at first to admit, this is a mess. I mean, the, the situation's a mess, not the ordinance, that's a whole, that's a separate mess. But how to, how to enforce this, I agree, because just like, just like you said, it says in there about excessive barking. Okay, well, what's that mean? Does that mean for three seconds or 33 seconds? Or in how long? And that's kind of, that's the discussion that I had with Captain Walker today. He said, "We're, we're too screwed. We, you know, you, I can, I can call, okay, or my tenants can call, or the neighbors can call, and the dogs are yapping, okay, for an hour at a time." Well, then the police come out there within three to five minutes, and maybe they are, maybe they're not. And then the millisecond they stop, whoop, that incident's over. And then if they start back up 10 seconds later, oop, that's a new incident. So how long does that go? And I don't think they're issued time stop, time watches to, stopwatches to determine how long it is. And then Captain Walker even said, and I'm not, I'm not, he's very helpful, very, very helpful, I want, I want to emphasize that. But he said that, you know, we as citizens could take a video of these dogs yapping, and then they, the police would forward them to the law director. Well, I'm guessing the law director probably has other things to do than, you know, than that, okay? To determine, is it long enough to shorten up, or, you know, what, what's, what's the ordinance say? What's your higher vice code say? See, it's a, it's a complicated issue, but the, the dog owners that are, that are being naughty, they know this, too, and it's a joke, you know? To the point where some are glad just to pay a fine whenever they happen to get caught, okay? Just roll over and pay it. And so that, that takes, that's an issue, too, because it, there should be something in there, if it's a frequent, if a person's a frequent flyer, then, then the ante should go up, okay? Because they're, you know, they're, they're paying 150 bucks a month for a dog anyway, for between pet, you know, pet fees and veterinarian fees and food and all that, so it's just another cost of having Fido in the house. And that, that isn't, that isn't solving my issue. So I bring that up, and just want to know what we can do.
Yeah, and penalty-wise, you could add, you know, your first offense is a minor misdemeanor, and every subsequent offense is a misdemeanor, the second, third, whatever you want. But I think it's also something, just in terms of like prosecution, right? You said, well, every time that dog stops barking, or they take it inside, but the cumulative effect, effect of a dog... But the cumulative effect of a dog, every morning I wake up to two hours of my neighbor's dog barking.
Right, yeah.
But that's, you know, it's one event, but you also can view it as the cumulative effect. Every, it's every morning, I don't care if it was forty minutes today and it was twenty minutes yesterday. But if it's every morning for an extended period of time and I get, then we have to define in court what's an extended period of time. But I think it goes back to what a reasonable person assumes.
And then the fact that somebody gets bit.
Ah, yeah.
And then that had no, nobody flat cared. I mean, I was like, "Oh, you still got a leg, okay, great," you know. And I mean, I couldn't even imagine that was even something that would not have a penalty to it. You know, but it doesn't. You know, it's like, okay, this is gonna take long, Ken? That's everybody involved, that nonchalant, okay. You know, if it was their child that got bit, they'd probably feel a little differently, but it wasn't. So it's always somebody else. And I'm, you know, here we are. So I'm just looking for, I'm just trying to get an answer for what the next step is so that I can monitor this thing, keep this thing moving down the track, too.
And you want that answer tonight?
No, I can wait, I can wait two weeks and you guys can prey on it or whatever you gotta do. I mean, this didn't occur overnight, it's not gonna get corrected overnight. But if we don't stir, you're still gonna have kids get bit, you know. I'm an adult, I got bit, it wasn't happy, but, you know, there's, just like there, you know. I won't go down that road. Anyway, there's things that can't be done within a thousand feet of, there's jurisdictions within a thousand feet of a school. Well, this house fits in that. And so if we care about those issues, I think a dog having bit somebody would, and still being gnarly, still being obnoxious and all that, I think that has some merit, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is this under a separate ordinance or not? The dog?
No, I think it would be under the.
The dog being this?
Yeah, 505. Yeah.
What we have pertaining to dogs and animals is all in 505.
Is it in fines, is that in there, too?
Well, there's a general provision that, you know, minor misdemeanors are this and that's somewhere else and I don't know where. And anything not classified is this. But in what I was talking about, there's a specific provision that says nuisance animal is a minor misdemeanor. So that is actually in here.
Yeah, and according to chapter 505, the penalties, it says C-section 501.99 for penalties applicable to any misdemeanor classification. So I guess we would be going to another.
Yeah, I assume 501 is then going to outline which?
Yeah, we'd be going to 501, so it's another chapter.
Yeah, what a minor misdemeanor carries and what all of that.
Although we've got on here 505.99 penalty. Oh, well, but when you read 505.99, it refers you to.
501.99.
Okay, are we confused?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Long.
So do we need to bring 501.99 into a committee for penalties or not?
No.
Okay.
Not at this point.
Okay.
Because this is going to define classes. So if you violate this, it's a minor misdemeanor. If you violate this, it's a misdemeanor of the second degree. If you violate this, it's a minor misdemeanor for the first offense and every subsequent offense. And then 501.99 is just going to say what each of those classifications means if you're found guilty of those. So that part's never going to change.
All right, thank you.
Well, not never, but that part's sort of subject to the Ohio Legislature.
Any other public participation? I was gonna tease you and say too late.
Clarissa Slater, 3645 State Route 4. So first, I just wanted to thank everyone again for their their actions on Tuesday, it is very appreciated. I did want to just make a brief statement. I don't know if all of you have read through the beginning of Robert's Rules, so I'm kind of a nerd about the book and read it. And the biggest thing that they're noting in there is that there was a bunch of Roberts subsequently, I just forgot the guy's first name, but the first Robert's Rule guy, he basically wanted to make a set of rules so individuals with different, differentiating opinions can have healthy debate. And so I just feel like that, in the spirit of that, it is okay to have differentiating opinions as long as we're respectful to each other. So I appreciate everything that happened on Tuesday. But the reason why I'm up here is because of what I had asked to be brought to health and safety. And I see now it's labeled as sex offenders in school. That's what the title is. I just asked for some clarification or change to that, maybe like sex offenders in spaces for children and families, since it's kind of going broad and maybe narrow it down, because I don't know where this conversation quite is going with the council yet. But I did provide some examples of other ordinances in other Ohio municipalities. One being as recent as 2018, I think the Medina one was even sooner. I'm trying to recall from memory, I left my packet back there. So one of the things that, just, my first undergrad was criminology. My husband works in, he works as a probation officer down in Columbus. So part of this is kind of like I have a lot of exposure to. But he, for registry, for probate, like the sex offender registry is separate from like probation and parole. So someone has, someone who has a probation officer is supposed to help rehabilitate somebody into society as a good standing member, right? That is not as long or can be shorter than what their sex offender registry is, from my understanding. I might not be perfect on that, I'm sure you're correct. So someone might be on probation for two years, and in that set of probation, they'll say you can't go to public. That might be in their release, and that's per judge, per probation officer. There's a lot of discretion in the judicial branch, so it's really up to their terms. It's not putting that on the public to like ensure that their boundaries are being respected, right? So I don't know if you guys have seen the Crawford County Now post, but one of the things they said is that higher-level sex offenders typically have life sentences and they'll never get out. I would firmly disagree with that. I also worked as a correction officer for five years, so I am aware of release and parole. Actually, I'm sorry, I misspoke, it's four years. So like, things like that, there's three separate tiers for sex offenders, and there's things in there that you would think, like even a lower offense would be in my, anything as a minor, I think, is disgusting, but, you know, I think we all agree with that, right? But like tier one is like importuning, I think everyone has become familiar with that with the Mansfield case. Unlawful sexual contact with a minor, voyeurism, sexual imposition, GSI, illegal use of a minor nudity-oriented material or performance. You see where I'm going here, it's tier ones. That is fifteen years for the registry, but that does not mean they are on probation or parole for fifteen years. So I'm trying to give like the reason why I think this is important, right? So that means they may register for fifteen years, they may be out of the public park looking, making strange behavior, looking at kids, someone calls and reports it, right? They call the police and they're like, "This guy's acting weird around children." Well, acting weird isn't a law, right? And so even if they do, even if the police, from my understanding, I don't know if they use Oleg or, I don't think they have access to leads in their police cruiser. So if they call in for like active warrants, they wouldn't have anything come back. I know they can do basic background checks with, you know, when they call back to dispatch. But they may be able to see a sex offender registry, but even then, they can't, it's not probable cause. There's no law here that they're breaking, right? It doesn't say they can't be there looking at children. That's where I'm getting at here. So I definitely think there's a gap there. I don't know if the state, something I've been talking to other people with, even maybe this should be brought up to the state or the county even. But, you know, the jurisdiction, it looks like this is in, within your rights. I'm sure Mr. Gerner may have more opinions on this, but it's been done other places. This isn't something like brand new.
So one of the things that we do when we want Mr. Gerner to get legislation is we look at other cities. We look at their codified ordinances and we collect those and we read them and look through them and we add our notes to them and we give them to Mr. Gerner. And magically, we have our own little codified ordinance in our email.
There should be, in the packet, say, there should be some examples, okay.
So see what I'm saying, though?
Yeah, I just wanted.
I mean, we all agree, we need something.
Right, yeah.
We just need something to discuss and make sure we're adding to it.
And so my last note on all of this is, this might be more administrative, but I don't know if any legislation would be considered for this or is through their discretion. But I'm trying to say this as politically correct as possible. There have been some occurrences out of the pool that, you know, have brought concern and discussion. And I was having a discussion with Fred Fisher because he donated a 2D card reader that was donated by him and J3 out there. Those can read like licenses, and that was my first thought, is maybe that could even be something if someone checking in as an adult, like a license reader, have it, some sort of software to cross-reference. But then I was thinking deeper, and this might need to have to be something that's brought up in full council to be discussed. But that would put a lot of, having individuals registered to use or access the pool may prevent a lot of liability to the city, including like actual liability waivers. I'm thinking like YMCA, right? Even if you're a guest, you have to register, like if you don't have, so what I'm looking for? Like, yeah, like even if you're not a member, right, you have to register. This would bring a lot of these problems and scrambling that I think happened during some events to rest, like unaccompanied minors, you'd have next, like emergency contact for. So that way you're not relying on friends to get, like friends of the kid to bring you, you know, in case there is something that kids need to be tracked down. I guess that might be like kind of adjacent to this, but it was something that I wanted to bring up. Adults could register families, next of kin, medical concerns. I mean, that was kind of part of, one of the problems is, you know, if you have someone registered, there's a notes that they can disclose, they can choose, they don't have to. But like if they have allergies, they have mental health issues, you know, things like that, all could be on there to give, you know, the tools for the staff. So for them to address things like that, so that's, I think, all I have. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Did you wanna say something here?
I said, "Would you like me to make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting?"
Ah, okay, we're done.
That's it?
Okay.
You better ask first.
Pardon?
Better ask for public participation.
Any more public participation? Okay, seeing no one. Then next we'll go to, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes from the July 11, 2024 Regular Health and Safety Committee meeting.
I would be more than happy to make a motion for the approval of the minutes of the July 11, 2024 Regular Health and Safety Committee meeting.
Second.
Okay, motion by Sherry, second by me, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Won't ask for opposed, because we all aye. We had on the agenda our track due to return, we've already had discussion on that. We just, I don't know, do you want to discuss anymore, the sex offenders? That is, while on the agenda, the sex offenders in school programs. I think this was what Mrs. Slater was just talking about.
So do we want to draft legislation on them?
That's what I was.
That was what I was gonna ask, too. So I think we're all in agreement there, too.
Sure.
Hey, Brian.
I have to say.
Just for doing some research heading into this meeting, most of what I have seen is restrictions on, you know, tiered sex offenders that are still registered in public parks or public places, or publicly owned places, so city-owned property, I suppose. So I would draft some stuff, but I think it probably would be most geared to city-owned parks.
I'd say city and schools. You would think schools would need to be listed there.
We'll look at it, yeah. I don't know, I, yeah.
That's covered by the state, though, right, the schools? That would just be another layer?
Somewhat, and then, the Parma one makes exceptions for legitimate purposes and other, you know. So we'll work on something and it will be a work in progress.
I was thinking, I'm not sure if it's Parma, but one of the areas made exceptions for legitimate purposes because they had like.
City council meetings there one time or something.
I was gonna say, I thought it was like AA meetings. So it was like, there was very specific, and a lot of the people. So it was like, yeah, there were certain times and dates, like everybody knew in advance, though, it was nothing.
Detailed, itemized, one, two, three, four, you cannot be here, yeah, very specific. Okay. Open projects. On the marijuana dispensary, at the last meeting, when the topic was discussed, we were looking to invite. Mike, you wanna come up and say who we wanted to invite? Why they're not here or just decline? Thank you.
Mike Keefe, zoning administrator, City of Bussaras. Farcus Farms representative sent an email earlier this week to Miranda canceling that they won't be here this evening because they had a, an agreement for a dispensary from their growing facility somewhere else. So they didn't want to pass up on that. So I have not heard anything else from them for them to reschedule. I'll reach out to them here tomorrow or Monday, if I can get ahold of them.
Oh, so there's a possibility that they missed?
I'm just thinking they had something come out that they had to finalize.
Okay, got you, then I misunderstood.
Because when I talked to Jeff Cole, he was really interested in talking. I think it's just something came up, they didn't wanna miss out this opportunity.
And then you were also going to check with, I believe, was it the Huron zoning administrator?
Yeah. One, it was the inspector. They're currently going through hiring that position right now.
The zoning?
The zoning administrator, my position for the City of Huron. They just sent the offer out to the new person. So I think once that, that person gets in and going, I'll contact with them. But I'd like to try to get some more feedback from the owners of the Upper Sandusky dispensary, because they own three or four dispensaries. And if you guys can think of any place else for me to look into for the next meeting, because I do not know where else to check. So, because there's a lot of municipalities and counties that are banning it. And so, yeah, it's, I think it's becoming either, if the area's gonna support it or if it's not, they're totally shutting it down. So one part that I think maybe why we haven't heard from Upper Sandusky is. So, one part that I think maybe why we haven't heard from Upper Sandusky is, well, would be taking away from their business. Because I've noticed that on the map show where the dispensaries are, it's like a radius of coverage. So, it's like, okay, maybe they don't want to build something in this area because they'll have less draw at somewhere else. But yet, Sandusky has four, well, three in the city and one out in Perkins Township. So, that doesn't hold up very well about the being, what's saturated for sales. So, that's all I have for that, because I don't have any other new information.
So, do you feel that you'll have information for the next meeting, or is that pushing you a little and maybe?
I don't know yet.
Okay.
I'd say, put on the agenda that I might have something to present.
Committee have anything to?
I just thought I can't wait to get some more information.
Right. Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Yep.
All right. Any more public participation? Seeing no one. I will adjourn the Health and Safety Committee meeting. That's-
6:52.
6:52. Thank you.
Public Lands and Buildings Committee, July 25th, 2024. Due to a lack of quorum, the Public Lands and Buildings Committee will not meet tonight. Economic Development Committee, July 25th, 2024. Due to a lack of quorum, the Economic Development Committee will not meet tonight. Service Committee, July 25th, 2024. Due to a lack of quorum, the Service Committee will not meet tonight. Plating Committee, July 25th, 2024.
Plating Committee comes to order at?
6:54.
6:54. Aaron Sherick, Carolyn Scheibl absent, Vicki Deschawn, and James Mead. Public participation for plating. Moving on, approval of the minutes from July 11th, 2024, Regular Plating Committee meeting. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the July 11th, 2024 Regular Plating Committee meeting.
I second that motion.
Thank you, thank you. General changes to the BCO 1189.03B, general resurfacing requirements. We were going to change that just to the downtown area. Is that correct, Mr. Gerner?
Excuse me?
Yes.
That, and then there was a possible another change at the last committee meeting when this was discussed. Chris, you were questioning the definition of a single-family residence.
Mike and, Mike and talk about that. We talked about that. It was three or more, right? Multifamily was three or more.
Three or more units?
Yes.
Well, wait a minute.
I said, I think two.
I'm looking here, and I made copies. Wouldn't you know, I did make a copy. Oh, must be chapter 1157. Or maybe not. But it says that a single-family dwelling means a building designed for or occupied exclusively by one family.
Yeah. But also, the number of units for multifamily also is determined by what zoning district it's in.
Okay.
You have it.
But here in our draft ordinance, under letter B, it says, "All off-street parking and loading areas located in the downtown business district, except for parking areas serving single-family residential uses." And that was what Chris was wanting, a definition of what is a single-family residential use. I need to see what section I found this under.
Let's get back to the committee on this answer.
Brian, would this be entered in 1189.03 or not? I mean, this wouldn't be an entry into that legend, that codified ordinance, would it? Since it's already listed.
Right, so-
We wouldn't add it to this codified ordinance, 1189.03.
You wouldn't necessarily want to, if it's a defined term elsewhere?
Right.
But if it's defined differently in different places?
We need to fix it.
You could just define it in this, as for the parking requirement, single-family residential houses shall be defined as units, not more than three disparate families. You could. But, I don't know, I guess I missed this question or this issue, and I don't know, it's defined multiple ways, multiple ways and multiple places.
Did you find it?
No, you understand that.
Oh, I stopped when you- Don't you all have your codified ordinance book out looking? Oh, no, I can't believe I didn't do that. Because I know I looked at definition of residence and it says, "See dwelling." Then you go to dwelling and it says, "That means any building or portion thereof which is designed or used for residential purposes, but not including a cabin, hotel, motel, dah dah dah." Then it goes on to say what a multiple-family dwelling is. Then it goes on to say what a single-family dwelling is, and that's what is referred to in this 1189.03, single-family, well, residence, which residence is the same as dwelling. And it says that that means a building designed for or occupied exclusively by one member. That's what I'm going to look at.
Oh, that's not the-
No, no. I'm, I'm trying to find. I put 1157. I don't think that's right. All right, residence or dwelling. So I guess, I mean, rather than everyone sitting here and watching me flip pages, I'm sure we all have, at least the public probably has better things to do. It's gone this long. I'm fine with giving Mike time to check on this and-
Yeah, let's give Mike some time, because he said something about how to do a zoning, so.
Okay.
R1, R2, R3, R4, AR.
And this is going to require a public hearing, is it not? Yeah, so?
Yeah, we have time.
Well, yeah, I'm just saying that, yeah, I mean, we've got to do that as well, so. All right. So, that's what you're going to check into, Mike, then, is what is a single-family residential uses as requested by Mr. Moritz? The definition of? No, you're fine. Want to do it right.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Amendment to the Baysore's codified ordinance to include ponds. So, we found out that the ODNR, the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, has a say-so in this, and so does our engineering department, the McHevers.
Yes, residential ponds. ODNR has some recommended design standards for discharge and also the use of berms to restrict surface flow off of fields into the basin of a pond, which is a good idea. It keeps a lot of the chemicals and the herbicides and stuff from the field coming into the ponds. And that has to be checked periodically, but ODNR has a really good pond management manual to help us develop what needs to be done for these. And we're getting there, but it's, it's going to just take a little bit more time.
Long process.
Yeah.
Any questions? Any questions about the pond area?
And I believe that information's been passed on to Mr. Diber.
Yes, I already called Mr. Diber and talked to him.
Great.
I think to accomplish what you guys are talking about too, you would throw another letter in here that says, you know, "No pond shall be permitted unless all of the, unless approved by the city engineering department." And then the city engineering department would have a list of, checklist of ODNR stuff. So, we don't need to put all of the ODNR stuff in the actual things. We just need to say that you need to get a certificate of approval from the city engineering department.
Right.
Who's going to know and be able to keep up on those regulations.
That's perfect. That's what I was trying to say.
Yes, ma'am.
So, at the very bottom of this first page that you had here, zoning permit, and the engineering department has to, okay, shall be required type of thing?
Yeah. Yeah, just-
Just add them in, that way we've got to cover-
Approval of the engineering department, yeah.
And approval. That was the word I was looking for. Thanks.
Can I add to that, that we need to be in contact with Dylan, the engineer, to see if we need to add a engineering sign-off fee to the pond approval sheet? Because he has to review it for stormwater management requirements.
They've got a couple of different fees that they may have to add.
Yeah. Stormwater management requirements, discharge, and where it's going to be dumping into the storm.
So, my question is, he just can't give you a checklist?
It might be a different thing for each thing. It just-
It might be different for each pond.
Yeah. Yeah. But I mean, I imagine that, overall, I think it's going to be, what's the word I'm looking for? A boiler, a boilerplate form for every pond? I mean, requiring a sketch of where it's going to go, depth. It's recommended that the slopes not be more than two to one going down to the bottom. I'm not sure if we're going to regulate depth. So, but that's just a little bit more of what we needed to discuss with Dylan.
So, is that something that you think you'll be ready to discuss at our next plating meeting, or?
If I can meet with Dylan in the next two weeks, most likely.
You already emailed him, didn't you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So hopefully.
Either that, or just like you wanted me to do on health and safety, it could be put on the agenda, and if you're ready, great. If you're not?
Yeah, go ahead.
We're going to hire new zoning. No, I'm teasing.
It's 707.
You've been put on notice.
I'm just going to stay, stay up here. We're going to start the signs.
Okay. Any more comments on the pond?
Uh-uh.
Okay, now we're down to 316, 320 East Wood Lawn.
And I know this is just a technicality, but I think we need to take out east, because I don't think-
There is no west?
No. And I think if you look at, look up on the, yeah, it's just 320 Wood Lawn Avenue, and that's what you'll find on the GIC map and all that.
And so then, procedurally on that, full council would refer that back to Planning Commission.
And that's full council.
Requested zoning, zoning designation change for that properties. And then Planning Commission would send back to council whether they approve or whatever.
So then, do we have to send this to Planning Commission?
Yes.
I mean, do we have to send, we need to ask to send this to full council, or just?
We can just, we just have to do it.
Full council has to send it to the-
Full council has to do that at the next meeting.
Gotcha.
Send that one to Planning Commission.
Now, at the last meeting on this matter, Mike, you were going to check to confirm if AR, because you know, there was a question, I believe, by Mr. Stuckert, is why was it even designated or zoned as AR to begin with? And nobody knew the answer. And someone was going to check to find out, is it right now properly zoned as AR, or is that wrong? I just know that that was what was mentioned at the last meeting.
Keep in mind, I'm five weeks under this position.
Oh, so you've got this.
Yeah.
We're trying. Landon and I discussed, I think we discussed with you two, Jim, with the, about the AR district. And we were just, we were curious if there was a possibility that we could just get rid of it.
That's still headed up planning, right?
It runs in an L, so the apartment's down on Main Street. It catches them too, as an AR zone.
Well, we talked, or you talked about sending letters to other surrounding properties to see if those people also wanted to join into the rezoning.
But that won't be until, don't we send a notice out to adjoining properties for changes in zoning?
When we send the notices out, that'll be the notices. I'd put a paragraph in there saying, hey, if you want to join, now's the time.
Okay.
Put it simply.
Is it the same 200-foot radius for, for changes in zoning compared to what we do for easy A?
I can tell you.
For some reason, I was thinking it was 500 feet for change in zoning.
I mean, we could go, we can, that's just a suggested area, right?
Right, right.
That's mandatory. So, we can send it out to the whole AR.
That's a lot of mail. That's a lot of mail to get, get back. Because if you do 200 feet, you're basically just doing the block and half the block to the east, because across the street is-
AR1.
AR1 is the school.
There are, it's R3, I'm sorry, R3.
Yeah, R3.
Because we wanted to move them from AR to R3, so they could have an accessory structure.
Because if we decide to go with just offering the change of zoning to just the block, then it's only 200-foot radius from the church that we'd be notifying of the change, instead of the whole district, just for the church property. But if we change the whole AR district?
So Vicki, what do you think? You want to try to get rid of the whole thing, or you just want to do the 200 feet?
Then we're going to have to look at every apartment complex that we have in the AR, if, how they're going to match what we're going to switch it to. Are we going to switch it to?
Yeah, but I'm just talking about the 200, single block.
Okay.
Not everybody.
Well, my gut is, Mr. Rebon and his wife, Reverend Rebon, they're the only ones that are requesting.
Yes. Majority of the other houses are single houses, aren't they? Or is WBCL in a back part of that block?
No, that's a whole other block. A whole block factor. That's a residential area.
Yeah, so I just go as-
So Warren and Charles are in between?
I'm suggesting that we just do the block, do the 200 feet. I'm suggesting that we just do the block. Do the 200 feet. Yes, please.
Bill Stuckert, 205 North Spring Street. We had an issue in the past here, a rezoning of parcel associated with the hometown garage on Perry Street. And if I remember, I'm pretty sure that that was restricted to notification of the parcels or properties within 200 feet radius at that time. So I think maybe it'd be a good idea to stick with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
So your gut feeling was?
That there'll be no contacting to see if there's other residents or properties that want to join in to being changed from AR to R3?
We can just add it at the bottom of our letter that we send out.
Yeah, the, the people in the radius will get the letter saying that they are being notified about the change. And at the bottom of it, there will be a note saying, if you are interested in being involved in this change, contact the office.
So our draft legislation will just be referring to changing the zoning from AR to R3 for 320 Warren Street? Then when we have the public hearing and then, then if people, other people are interested in being, in joining into this zoning change, then the draft legislation will need to be revised to make reference to them, their property addresses or permanent property, permanent parcel numbers?
Right.
Okay.
Is 320 the only address listed? Because we have 316 and 320. And I thought it was because those two lots had addresses.
So there was, maybe the church, it was knocked down and somehow they got the church, the churches got possession of that now. I don't know if they bought it or...
And yes, you are, yes, Aaron, you're correct. Because I did pull out the GIS maps or whatever. And we do have 316 Woodlawn Avenue and 320 Woodlawn Avenue. So those are the two addresses.
We could even ask them to combine it. I mean, it's nothing to combine those two addresses.
Would you have to combine though the lots because they have personal, they have their own permanent parcel numbers?
It does make it a little bit more difficult because now you've got a whole bunch of other stuff you gotta give.
You just gotta go to courthouse and tell them, right?
Oh, no.
Oh, I don't think so.
No, you gotta, you have to have a whole new deed drafted that combines it together.
Oh, that's two grand.
So, yeah, no, I mean...
I already know that it's in the works because I've talked to Isaac.
So even in an R3, I know you've only been here for five weeks, in an R, even in an R3, can we okay the accessory structure? If it's a separate parcel of land and there's nothing on that parcel of land? Now we're running, we can't do that.
Because he's planning on attaching it to the church.
Eventually.
That's why it's recommended that they consolidate, consolidate the lots.
Okay.
Because right now it's three lots.
Okay.
It's the 31, it's the 10-foot, and then where the church building is. After my conversation with Isaac, that it's recommended that they get consolidated. Because then it'll be easier to approve the accessory structure. Because now you can't put an accessory structure on a lot without a house.
Right.
You can't do it. So the only way you're gonna get around it is to rezone it and do the consolidation plan of lots.
All right. So I'm gonna have to get a hold of Mr. Rebon and make sure.
So.
That's the process. All right.
Mr. Gerner?
Yes, sir.
Again, Bill Stuckert, 205 North Spring Street. If the area is, is expanded, though, beyond the church property, people within the 200 feet decide that they want to then be rezoned as well, then would notices then have to go out again to people 300-foot radius beyond them as well then?
I'm certain the process has to start all over again, Mr. Gerner.
Seems like, yeah, if we then create a larger portion of what we want to rezone, then yes, we'd have to start it from that. I don't know, I suppose.
Actually, if we're sending out the letters and we're getting them back right away saying, so we're not really starting it again, we're just sending out more letters to a larger space.
Maybe, but...
Because we're not really, we haven't gotten further if they do, if they respond.
If they respond, but a lot of times they'll just come to the public hearing and then at that point we'll know. You could, in the alternative, have a public hearing prior to commencing all of this. Send out letters to everybody in that general vicinity, say we're looking at rezoning this.
So you want to do that before we start to process? It seems like it would save a lot of headache.
Maybe.
Can you do a public hearing prior to?
Oh, you can set a public hearing for anything.
But I mean, would, would we still have to have a second one?
Oh, we have to have a second one, yeah.
That's what I was thinking.
I need time to think.
Okay.
Sorry.
Because I want to stop up, talk to Mike again about this and recap everything, so, in his office. Can we move on?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir.
Signs in the right of way.
What about BCO chapter 905?
Huh?
Oh, yeah.
Are we holding on B, on 905?
Yeah, we're waiting on draft legislation. You want to speak on that or not?
It's on the list.
All right. No, it's a... I'm making a longer every meeting.
All right, man. We're almost done with the service stuff, so, but, uh, we'll get that.
Now, on chapter 905, in your draft that you're doing, what we had originally talked about was the 905.01 and the 905.02, which referred to council. We're gonna remove council having any notification responsibility and that falls back to the administration.
That's my understanding.
Then, at the last meeting, Jim, you brought up that, you brought up the possible amendments of Bussaras Codified Ordinance, section 905.05, to require that a permit fee be charged, because right now there is no charge. And then you also brought up Bussaras Codified Ordinance, section 905.99, for possible reduction in the set penalty fee. And I don't, I wasn't sure if Mr. Gerner had gotten those two suggestions.
Oh, he wasn't here, was he?
Yeah, no, he wasn't.
He skipped.
[laughing].
Crawford College Connection meeting.
Because right now the penalty is whoever violates any provision of this chapter shall be fined not more than $100. Each day's continued violation shall constitute a separate offense.
But that's after the 275 days. They're given 275 days to fix the problem.
Yeah. And so you want that to be higher or lower?
Well, when you spoke the last time, you felt $100 was too high, is what you said.
$100 every day?
Yeah.
And so it also says, it also says not more than, right? So, and it could be, each violation could be constituted as a separate offense. That's something that, you know, we come to a resolution and we say, look, we'll give you a 30-day extension. You have $100, you know, I don't know.
And then right now the assessment is, or not the assessment, that the property owner has 270 days from service of notice to repair their sidewalk. It's not 275 days unless you were wanting to change it to 275 days. Right now it's...
I didn't have it in front.
Okay.
Here's my thought about it. If they're given the notice, they have 270 days. During that time, they could ask for an extension, at which, that would add to the 270 days if that was allowed. So by the time you get to the end of it, how many years do you get to not do what you were told?
365 days.
But that's what I'm saying. But yeah, but just like everything else with the courts, if you come in and you give reason and you talk, you know, just like coming into the city, you can get the extension. Like, okay, we won't start the 270 days until you are able to talk to these people next week or, you know. That's how people work the system. I think that's why it's $100 days, or $100 a day, every day thereafter, because that's like really, that's somebody looking at you and going, okay. You know, they're not doing anything.
Aaron, you want to keep it the same, yes?
I, since it says up to and you have a way to argue it, yes. I like it like that, for the penalty. Just because that way if somebody's seriously just being a jerk.
Okay. It gives Mr. Gerner teeth.
It gives Mr. Gerner teeth.
Vicki, how do you feel about it?
I understand what Aaron's saying. I agree with it.
Because he has the ability to keep it less and he has the ability, it's there.
And if somebody who's working with the city, participating in the process, they've got a contractor that, you know, we know that it's a good faith effort. If we send a letter and for 270 days we haven't heard hide nor hair of them, it's a different situation. And you have a quick question though. The pet, a permit fee, you got a number on your permit fee?
What do you think?
Does it get determined by the administration?
The permit? No?
Yeah.
Isn't there a fee schedule?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't have that.
I mean, are we, isn't the review of fees for everything being revised right now?
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
Cap bins, permit fees.
Street cuts, all that, yeah.
Across the board.
Oh, is that part of the section nine or chapter nine?
Chapter nine, yeah.
Okay, so that should all fall under that, what that be?
So...
So you just say you need a permit and then see section nine?
So we're keeping it the same?
That part.
Okay. Signs right of way?
Why'd you sit down? You might as well bring your chair over.
Okay. First off, I'm gonna take questions. Vicki?
I don't have a question, but I'll tell you what I did today. I went out to the engineer's office. Because I wanted to know for people like myself who do not have sidewalks.
Right.
Where my right of way is. And so, gentleman, very nice, showed me how, you know, I can go on and figure this all out. And he gave me a rough figure of, you know, this is, you know, what your right of way is. And this is just a little side, cute little note. And I thought, well, I'm not sure why I'm worrying about it because I don't put signs in my yard. But then I remembered, I do have a sign in my yard. It's one of those little, little dog with a scooper that, you know, please, if you feel your dog needs to poo in our yard, I'd appreciate if you'd pick it up and whatever. And I thought, if that sign is in the right of way and you took that and I got it back, I probably would beat you with it. But I went out and measured and I, and of course, it's easy to, you just pull it up and you would move it. But it can stay where it's at because I'm well within. But my concern is, and that's, I'm being somewhat funny here, but not, is I can see how, and I understand totally where you're going with this. And with people that have sidewalks, I mean, the right of way pretty much is a no-brainer. It's before, you know, so you just drive down and you see a sign there, you just... But for people that don't have sidewalks, and the gentleman out at the engineer's office informed me today that there's not set right of way dimensions, if you will. They differ all over. So...
How will I know when I go?
Yeah.
When I pick a street to check?
Okay.
I'll be checking with the owner's website before I go out.
Okay.
Because I'm gonna just check certain areas the first day after.
Okay.
And I'll know, I'll know what the right of way with is.
Okay. And so then you remove a sign, and I'm talking about for where there's no sidewalk, then, I mean, you'll remember where that right of way is. So when you're driving around another time and someone decides, I'm popping a sign back there and I guess I'm wondering how much time is this gonna take to...
That was brought up after the last meeting. And the more I thought about it, I'm like, yeah, I mean, I have a lot of stuff going on. But the main, I, I want to tell you, actually I brought this up. One of the main things I'm doing is the main corridors. Sandusky Street, Mansfield Avenue, the main thoroughfares. There's a lot of stuff on telephone poles that shouldn't be there. There are bright speed signs everywhere that shouldn't be there. You name it, it's out there.
Okay.
Surge signs everywhere, they shouldn't be. I've even called them, I mean, it was before I even started doing this, I called them about their signs. So, and they're still there. So I just want to get the stuff that's not supposed to be there in the right of way moved.
Okay.
So, I mean, a lot of those signs, I mean, I am not going to be removing real estate signs. I'll move them back. Either beyond the sidewalk, I mean, I don't remember any, too many real estate signs that are in the tree lots. Maybe one that I've seen.
Yeah.
And it's probably for sale by owner. So it's like, I'll just move it.
Okay.
So, but certain signs, I mean, it's pretty much common sense which ones I'm gonna be pulling, so.
So then, and I'm, you know, probably playing devil's advocate here, but, so, real estate sign, you just move it back?
They should be out of the right of way because that's...
Okay, understand. So are, could someone say you're picking and choosing what signs you're not going to pull up?
Oh, no, everything in the right of way is fifteen for me.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm back to, if, if it's not easy for someone to distinguish their right of way, which again would be us people that have no sidewalks. So in other words, if you would come to my home and you would see my little dog poopy sign, you would pull it up and bring it to wherever and let me know that you have my sign? Or would you do like you're gonna do for the real estate signs and just move my little...
It's, if there's personal signs through your yard?
Okay.
I'll move them back.
Okay.
If you don't have sidewalks, whatever street you're on, I'm always gonna have a set thing. If it's there within so many feet of the edge of pavement?
Mm-hmm.
If you don't have a sidewalk, I'm just gonna pace off the center of the street and put it 30 feet. Because that's gonna cover every single right of way in town.
Okay.
Except for Sandusky Street, Mansfield, or 98 for Sandusky Street, Mansfield, and what's the road going up to the park?
Another drive.
Um, no, I mean...
Nevada.
Yeah, Nevada Road.
Okay.
So, all the rest are either gonna be 33, 40, 50, and 60 for right of ways.
So, when you start pulling your boss's signs at election time?
Yes, please do.
I already got, I don't care.
Thank you.
I, I, when I took, just personal note, when I took this job, one of the benefits of me taking this job is I don't owe anybody anything. When I took this job. I'm not from here. I, I, yeah, I don't owe any, I don't play favorites at all.
Okay.
So, that's one of the things, my four years as township trustee in Erie County, I didn't play favorites at all.
Well, and I would even hope...
I followed by the regulations.
I would hope even us that have lived here all our lives are not playing favorites.
Because it's, everything's in the ordinance that you guys approved. If you were here or not, it's in the bylaws. I'm just enforcing it.
Okay.
Aaron, you got questions?
I was gonna say, no, I have brought this up multiple times since I've gotten in. Because every year, somebody decides they're going to hit every piece of property they possibly can with a sign without permission, without looking at where it's going, out by gaiors. out by Guyer's.
Oh, yeah.
Where Guyer's used to be, there's always signs all the way around, right there at that point, the owners of the, is Lind Advertising, by the way, that little point out there, they do not want any signs that are not community-wide. If, if, if it's something for children's services or a library, they don't care, but if it's for an individual or an individual party, they don't want it. But, yeah, so, yeah, that's always been my pet peeve. As a little kid, I used to have to deal with those signs all the way, through my entire life, I've had to deal with signs. I hate them. But, yeah, I, I really appreciate that somebody else is doing this, because I have come up, and first thing the police say is, well, we don't know who put it there. Yeah, but you can't legally have it there, like, you can't put somebody for mayor, or commissioner, or anything out front here. You can't put it at the public park, you can't put it on somebody else's private property. You know, I always figured those were easy clear-cut things, and nobody wanted to step up with that, so I really appreciate what you're doing.
The other thing, I, I had somebody come in, I think it was this morning, asking about a digital advertisement sign, where it would be good to put in town, and I'm like, I'm, I am not able to tell you that, um, I'm not sure what the regulations were on it, but I know the top of them are about 20 some feet high, and it would have to be in the main corridor, either on the north or on the south end of town.
Because.
Because they're not allowed. But, it was a digital sign, and they were pushing that, well, you guys would get free airtime for natural disasters, water leaks, which, we had two today, and, and such as that, and I'm like, well, that's not up to me to decide for that. That's something that needs to be brought up to council, but currently, we don't allow it. So, um, one thing I do want to add is, if you guys see any signs in front of any street regulatory signs in town, please let me know, or Tommy know, or Jeff Dunne, because that needs to be removed immediately. Because there are no signs that are allowed to be by any traffic control device, either attached, because somebody put a garage sale sign on a stop sign.
Oh.
Somewhere on, I can't remember what street it was, somebody told me it was there today, but it needs to be removed, so. I think one of the things that I always liked is, let's help each other make it better. So.
I think, at least when Mr. Sean brought this up the first time, Mrs. Sean, um, in my mind, I thought what she was, one of the inquiries was, if we could change it from saying that the sign can't be located in the right of way, because that's a imaginary, man-made construction that nobody knows, and say 15 feet from the edge of the road, or something to that effect. So it's clear-cut, and everybody knows exactly where it's at, and it's not, because I don't know, I mean, I, I can guess where my right of way is, but I don't, can't tell you.
You can't do that.
And why not?
You can't use 15 feet off of roadway. Because city streets are anywhere from 20 to 22 feet wide, 28 feet between back to curb to back to curb, okay? So you split that, you're at 11, 11 and a half feet. If the right of way is only 33 feet, I mean, you're gonna be pretty close to the edge of the street. If you're, if you have a 60-foot right of way, you got 28-foot of pavement, usually you have sidewalks, so you'll be outside of the sidewalks. But using a 15-feet.
Oh, I just made up a number, I have no idea what the number should be. I just made up a number, if there was a number that would, it has to be on the, you know, on the homeowner's side of the sidewalk, or no closer than something, and I don't know.
Because usually on the sidewalks, the right of way is right at the sidewalk, or a foot towards the house.
Right.
So, using so many feet off edge of pavement, I do not think that's gonna work, because not all of those roads are the same width, and not all the roads have the same right of way width. So, I'm just.
Oh, I don't.
Using my 35 years of land surveying experience on that one, so. I mean, it's, the, no signs in the right of way, I do believe that's pretty much every municipality in the state. So, and I know it's, and O.D., um, it's in the, O.D. sign manual about not having non, cautionary safety signs in the right of way, I do believe that's, I don't remember what the signs section that is, but it's enough. I remember putting it on roadway plans, plenty over the years, so.
I'm thinking of that song, "Signs," so I'm, and I'm not into music.
Blocking up the scenery.
All right, any more comments on the signs? Got anything else?
Um, the only other, well, the other thing I have is, I don't know if it falls under planning, or, or what it falls under, but, um, we had, I had some issue with some, salespeople from Bright Speed knocking on doors the other day, and they said they didn't need a solicitor's permit with the city. They said, oh, they don't, they're not required to have one. And I'm like, I said something to the police department, and they said they didn't have enough people to go out and enforce that. So, is there any way, well, no, I'm not adding more work to what I already have, so. I don't know, is that something that's required for it to go through the police department?
Yeah.
Yeah, you'd have to have law enforcement sign the complaint.
Okay.
I mean, we could theoretically come through my office, and we could prepare all of the criminal complaints, and, but then law enforcement's gonna have to sign them and serve them.
And they have to see it happen, right?
They keep saying that, but no.
Oh, okay.
No.
So we can definitely try to, try and enforce it.
No, but you take, like, law enforcement, you take.
Attach a fee, a permit fee to it, sure, I'll, I'll take care of it.
Okay.
Hey, you heard that, Chris, he wants a permit fee attached to this.
So, but, I mean, I guess the practicality, though, like, law enforcement's gonna be the ones that would have the ability for them to get basic identifying information, so that we could then proceed. I mean, if.
Yeah. I mean, it's almost.
Brian goes up to him, I.
It's almost like the same, same registration that we use for contractor registration, so.
Well, it says in here, 7/11/07, it shall be unlawful for any solicitor, canvasser, peddler, hawker, inter merchant, transit vendor, merchandiser, agent to engage in such business within the city without first obtaining a permit in compliance with the provisions of this chapter. The applicants for the permit shall file with the chief of police a sworn application in writing, which will give the following information, name and description of the applicant, the permanent home address, and full local address of the applicant, a brief description of the nature of the business. And then I wanted to think, because I was reading this, because we'd had some people out on our street, then they're issued a permit thing that says that they are approved by the city to be out soliciting.
Does that involve an ID with a.
Yeah, the chief of, the police chief, well, it says, may issue to each permitee under this chapter, um, a badge which shall contain the words Bussar City Approved Solicitor, and the period for which the permit is issued, and the number of permit in letters. Penalty, any solicitor or peddler who shall be convicted of any violation of the provisions of this chapter, da-da-da-da-da-da-da, shall be guilty of a minor misdemeanor. In addition, shall have the permit revoked at the discretion of the court.
Now, if the police issue it, then the court can take it away?
Yeah, theoretically, I suppose, yeah, but.
But can't the police take it away?
Yeah, yeah, so if the, if the police issue a permit, and we're prosecuting you based upon that permit, the city's going to take your permit in the first place.
All right.
We don't wait for the court to, I mean.
Okay.
And assume if there's some sort of violation.
Any else?
No.
Open projects?
No, thank you.
All right. Public participation. Come on up.
Ken Long, 625 South Spring Street, I, I have a question, only. You mentioned there's no digital signage allowed in town, but we have one already, or we have more than one?
Digital signage?
Digital.
Digital.
Please.
Oh, it's gotta be, it can't be on Sandusky Street, is that correct?
Yeah, I think that there's.
Can't be facing, or something like that, there's stipulations in there.
Restrictions in the downtown area, but, um, the one that you're thinking of is on the side of the old Struble Drugs, I assume?
Yes.
Um, so, they took down a sign and put up the same, the same exact footprint, and they had some case law coming out of, I don't know, Columbus, or somewhere, saying that we couldn't, um, we couldn't apply our, their, their previously grandfathered-in sign is now grandfathered in still, even though they changed the complete character of it. So, it, we, I think that one.
So new one's not allowed?
Right.
Even though that, that's grandfathered?
That one was grandfathered, the one I'm thinking of, but, yeah, new ones, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Public participation. Meeting adjourned at?
7:44.
7:44.
Finance Committee, July 25th, 2024.
Members James Mead, Christopher Maritz, Vicky Deshaun, Kevin Myers, the chair's not here, I'll be stepping in for chair tonight, and we'll call this to order at 7:45. Public participation in finance. Anyone? Finance.
Nope.
Approval of amendments, July 11th, 2024, regular finance meeting?
I move to approve the July 11th, 2024, regular finance committee meeting minutes.
I second that.
Motion by Vicky, second by Chris. Um, purchase of real property is on our list, we're gonna table that for tonight?
We have to vote.
Oh, I'd like to table that for tonight.
No, we have to vote on our motion, don't we?
Oh.
Yay.
Yay.
All in favor?
Yes.
Wait, who made the motion, who seconded?
Chris made the motion, and I seconded it, but he didn't ask for a vote.
It's been a long night. Purchase of real property, is okay to table that for tonight?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Open projects?
I have one, not really an open project anymore, since it already passed legislation and so ordinance now, or it's a, it's a, um, where am I at? Resolution now, and that is for 226-2024, police and fire equipment. I know it was brung up before, I don't think we ever went anywhere with it, but I think we should still have something to go along with this, to help the public understand. Uh, it was brung up a concern before about our, um, 2% out-of-town worker stuff, and I still think, if we want a strong turnout for that levy, that we need to have an ordinance saying that us as a council, this council, will not go after the 2% out-of-town workers for this levy. So no, can't go past our council, I think, so, I was maybe thinking, we're do something like that, probably even out this thing out further, make sure that the fire and police department get what they need to implement on this. Just a thought.
Absolutely.
I mean, you could.
This would be, it would be a resolution also, but.
Yeah, yeah, if you could do that. I mean, yeah.
So the resolution will be dated?
Right.
You can do that, I didn't know you could do that. It starts here and ends here? How do you feel, Vicky?
You want to say that again, Chris, please? Well, because I was looking to make sure that, you know, the right committee's talking about what you're talking about.
I figured it'd be finance, I didn't know where else to put it at.
Well, well, it is, it is an open project under finance. I just wanted to make sure. And so you're saying that you want to have prepared?
Resolution stating that this, this council will not go after 2 and a half percent out-of-town workers, um, taxes.
Out-of-town taxes.
For, yeah, out-of-town taxes for this, for this levy.
And see, this discussion was held one other time.
And we never, anywhere with it, we didn't.
But I'm trying to remember what all was talked about, why you could, why you couldn't.
Well, I, we couldn't go past this council, and we knew that, it couldn't be a permanent forever thing, that it couldn't happen. So I think we were, we were just talking about, maybe it just for this council wouldn't go after that for our term, while we were in here.
But the question I always, in my mind, like, even if this council could pass it, this council could also repeal it. Like, so, I know that, I, I mean, politically, it would be.
It would be awesome, I mean.
Crazy to pass something saying we're not going to do it, and then repeal it and do it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Right. But, I mean, I think that, you know, like, the federal tax cuts, they have expiration dates on them, but you can even repeal them prior to their expiration dates, or you could extend, I mean, I don't know.
Repeal that would be suicide, though.
I was gonna say, Greg, weren't you the one that discussed this area?
Seventeen hundred people, you get their votes right away, you could do that.
Yeah.
Greenway 1125 Hill, Chris Drive. The discussion we had was that, uh, part of the proposal was to write it in the legislation that it could not, out-of-town tax could not be repealed during the period of the five-year agreement for this levy, okay? So basically, it came down to saying, well, they didn't want to write it in the legislation.
Now, when you say write it in the legislation, you meant in the actual.
Part of the legislation.
Okay, yeah.
And I believe Mr. Gurnick said.
Yeah, I don't illegally, to put it in that.
You can't legally do that.
And that, that, those have to be very specific, and can only contain what they can contain, or they get kicked by the Board of Elections.
Right, and that's what you said.
But we could pass this subsequent.
But, that's what I'm bringing back up. So basically, and what was brought up was that only this council could write that, but then, as Mr. Gurnick said, another council could possibly repeal that.
Right.
Okay, which goes against what you're trying to achieve. It was also brought up about the timeline, a date, that it could not be repealed, and but it went on death issue.
Right.
Okay, I'm glad Chris has brought this back up, but the whole thing, the premise was, premise behind this was, Chris is right, you got 1,770 people that are out-of-town workers that reside in the city limits of Bussar's. But then you, we figured it up, too, is that if they have at least one person, that's over 3,400 people that could actually vote this levy down, if they so decided, decided to, by their choice of going to their polling place and doing whatever they want to do personally, okay? So that's 3,400 votes. There has never been 3,400 votes in this county before. If you check the county board election, we have never had that many votes before, that often, in this county as a whole. Matter of fact, not in the city limits of Bussar's, okay? And that's a known fact, it's never been that high on the voting, most roughly 2,800 to 2,900. But if you get 3,400 people that say no, you're SOL. So the premise was behind this, was to have an agreement with a deadline, that the income tax could not be repealed from the start date of the issue of the income, property tax, to the end of that property tax, okay? And that was what Mr. Gurnick was talking about in some of the meetings, was, we had to make another ordinance, or a resolution, or whatever, on that effect, okay? So it could not be part, because he thought it would get kicked out by the board elections and the state attorney general's office, because there was a restriction on that. So basically. So basically, it's back in the ballgame again because you're looking, as council members, you're looking to get this passed within the city. Okay? And I publicly came up, and Jimmy knows this too, there's no snowballs and chance that it's gonna happen because if someone gets a hair the wrong way and repeals it in the next council, there's gonna be a lot of upset people in this town. Okay? So that was the whole premise behind it. If you want people to vote for this, I think you need to find a resolution that says that you will not repeal it during this period. And no council, and I even brought that up too, no council can, this council or any further councils can repeal it during that deadline or during that deadline.
That was the problem with that thing.
Yeah, because I don't think one council can say what another council can or can't do.
But I guarantee you, if.
Home rule.
We did this and then next council comes in and they want to.
That's a sticky subject.
Repeal that, 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 that would be done anyway. I don't know why you would.
Because that, that was, that was the big thing. Because people are now saying, well, if you, you know, why should I vote for this if I'm gonna get jammed, you know, in two years? You know? And, and then are, they're gonna, then I'm, I'm taxed even more. You know, that's the thing. I think, you know, and Brian knows this too, home rule is a sticky situation here in State of Ohio. And what is legal and what is not legal under home rule. I mean, it's very, very confusing and takes a lot of time to figure that crap out. But I think there's something that needs to be looked at because if you want people to vote for this, you're gonna have to have some kind of assurances that this is not gonna happen. And I know by looking at so far, unless you pass something or do something, there's no guarantees to anything. Thank you.
Why are you all looking at me?
I don't know.
I have no opinion on this one.
Mr. Gurnick, is there some way of making up legislation that would?
Make a draft.
Put a stand out, make a draft of it to, you know, find out if we can do this? Because I'm telling you, it's, it's a sticky issue with everybody calling me up all the time about it. Still.
Chris, to me, it's a, it's a political statement, but it can be kicked out anytime. This council can get rid of it. The next council can get rid of it.
It could, but I doubt they would, though. So right now, we're sitting good, right?
We haven't passed anything yet.
Right.
Besides the initial safety forces levy.
The city as a whole right now is doing a lot better with what we're doing in January when we first set these chairs.
I guess not.
Yeah, yeah.
You guys, as a city council, could pass a statement or issue a proclamation saying that, you know, we, we hear, you know, we could do legislation, right? But you also could issue something saying you have our word that during our tenure, we won't affect the out of town tax credit.
And that's something you could do here and then have to pass on to the council? Or we can just do the council?
No, just, as councils as a whole could issue a statement saying that we, we make a, our word is our bond kind of thing. Because, you know, I mean, the logistical consideration was always, you could pass anything, but you could also repeal anything.
Yeah, we have to do, with the council to make that statement, I'm assuming.
Yeah. Well, or you, Miranda and I could write a statement and you all could just sign it. You know, issue a public statement, um, sending it out.
I'd go with that.
Something.
How do you stay to do something like that and have to? We don't know what the future's gonna bring. So, Chris, if it's proven to you that we have to renege on what we just talked about.
Then I won't be here next time.
Okay.
I'm willing to take that chance. Because it's important that we get this done for the equipment for the city. Unless it's gonna give us, you know, could be possibly the biggest vote turnout we've ever had? Who knows?
Is this something that, are you okay? Or I mean, if you want to go ahead and, you know, or you're just, you're just asking him to do a draft?
Right.
Right now? Okay.
Yeah, let's look, let's look at the draft.
So the rest council's not here anyway, so I'm out there, but.
Well, I mean, and it's not, it would just be the committee. I mean, we're asking as, because it would come out of finance, correct? Yeah.
Yeah.
That's why we're talking about it, so. I guess, and I don't want to, um, Kaylee, put you on the spot here, but, you know, having.
That's why I look this way.
Been in the office today and, you know, we talking about we may have to tighten our belts this year or for next year.
Yeah. Um, there, so we did transfer everything previously from the general fund to the safety forces 202 fund. Um, it's, it was a, it saved us around $40,000, which isn't gonna buy us a fire truck or any large equipment or anything we may need like that. Um, might cover a retirement. So, so, yeah. I'm not on council. Uh, I, if it was me, I would hesitate putting anything out that would feel like it ties your hands or you're any, making any promises that might be an issue in the future. But that's up to you guys. I mean, to answer your question from earlier, we are doing better in comparison to January. But if we want to make some of those larger purchases or police and fire would request us to make in the next, in the coming years, we have to have that. I do understand what you're saying, though. Making that positive, uh, doing that for them would help possibly get more votes, but that's up to you guys.
I'm fine with going ahead with preparing a draft legislation and, um, and you know, one thing, and I've been wanting to say, I mean, Mr. White, you know, you have indicated you just have people calling you all the time, is what you're telling me. I wish people would call me. Yes, I'm saying. I, I mean, I, on, on one hand, I could count. I bet you I haven't had five phone calls from, you know, I may have had one person call me three or four times, but five different people. I bet you I haven't had that many people call me and express their interest on whether they do or don't want some. I don't know how the people feel. And I would love, I mean, my email, all of our emails are on the website, city website, our phone numbers, um, I mean, you know, I would like to vote the way the people, but I, I need, I need to know what the people are thinking. And again, I welcome the phone calls or the emails. You know, we have both of those. Again, you know, we could do that, so. So now when I come to the next meeting and say, I am so tired of these emails and phone calls, no, I won't say that. But please.
Greg White, 1125 Hill, Chris Drive. Maybe you should have a couple open public forums here in council chambers and invite the public in and let, maybe they'll come in and speak to you. I know some people that I talk to, and Chris knows and Jimmy knows, it's usually at Walmart, Kroger's, or where I'm at. And then some people do know my phone, they'll call me. But I was just talking to Mike. I can't put a sign on telephone poles that says, "Call Vicki." So, um, but maybe an open public forum meeting to just, you know, listen to people, okay? I mean, you have that right as council. You, as Mr. Gurnick said earlier, you have that right to have any type of public forum you want as council at any time to address issues that are concerns to the citizens. And I think that would be a great idea to do. I mean, social media, I'm tired of that crap. There's too many, there's too many people on there with so many negative comments about crap that I like to take them out and show them what social media really is, but I can't do that.
Now, Greg.
So. Not being nice.
Want to order?
I'm being nice, I didn't say it. But to me, I think the more involved that you get with your community and maybe going to the night's out coming up in August. Okay, would be a great point there.
And I think, so the last time we did the quarter percent income tax, there was a tax levy committee that talked about, and I, I, it's probably past time that we start getting that stuff moved, you know, moving.
Right. Uh, Mr. Myers is the one that started that with the signs and stuff like that.
Now, you talking about the fire?
No, when they did.
No, when they did the income tax levy two years ago.
Yeah.
That quarter of a percent, there was a levy campaign committee.
Right.
And we probably need one for this camp so that we can start coordinating a approach to.
Yeah, yeah, we talked about that today.
Yeah, I mean, but to me, the more, the more involved that I think you allow the, the public to become, I think it would be in the greatest interest.
I'm perfectly fine with doing something like that.
With council and the city as a whole. Because, you know, there's, like I said, there's so much negative coming out. We definitely need some positive things to come out and, and try to, um, how do I say it? Change the mood, you know, the premise of everything, uh, working together and working forward without getting, as some people have told me, that out of town workers being screwed over. Okay? And that, that's the whole premise.
Okay.
So, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
It's okay, you can clear such a, like, how are you, Jim? Is that okay? All right. Clear this later, 3645 State Route 4. Vicki, I'm bringing this up because you and I had this, like, hour-long conversation a month ago, right? About like wanting to do things, right? Um, I just have a procedural concern. And Chris brought this up, said it had already been voted through as legislation. I don't think anything was technically referred back to finance for this discussion. And I just feel like maybe it should be brought up to full council for a discussion so all members can discuss this. I am for it, by the way.
Now, now, what is it we're talking about, Clarissa?
This, this last conversation we just had about, um, the out of town tax credit sort of like right on our resolution.
Bringing up projects. Full council.
It's not an open projects. It was voted back to, it was voted as legislation, so it's technically like not. My, my whole thing is.
Now, what is not open project? Excuse me, Clarissa. The revoking of the. That's on the open projects. Just, just give me a second here, make sure I'm speaking correctly. But, yeah, under finance, we still have on here revocation of out of town tax credit. And the last reporting out was on January 31st, 2024. Special meeting held for the purpose of discussing complete or partial revocation of out of town tax credit. No action taken at this time. So.
My concern was because, the way that, just because the way it was presented from Chris was said that this technically been voted out, or voted to full council for the, I, I just want to make sure that, that it's here and where it's supposed to be. That's all I'm saying.
Yes. It's just. Finance and it's still on the open project.
So it's like, not like adjacent, you're saying like, this is, okay, cool. I just wanted to make sure that that was.
And I think, Mrs. Deshawn's gonna correct me if I'm wrong, but although even if it weren't an open project, it could be discussed, but no official action could be taken on that.
Okay.
So, yes, but.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure that.
Am I wrong on that? I think I'm right on that.
Yes, you're correct.
I was understanding.
But then I don't know if official action, would that be request, well, requesting you to do a draft legislation? Or official would be referring it to council, referring legislation to council?
Right, voting on something. And you could all, I mean, you could email me and request draft legislation. Hey, Brian, can you prepare this?
Oh, I do that all the time. I don't do that. I just send emails.
Friendly reminders.
Close advise the status of this draft legislation.
They're very helpful, I appreciate them.
And I do about four or five of the other morning at what hour?
It was better. I think it was like five.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, I know, it seems like splitting hairs. I was just concerned because he's, he's talking about a separate resolution, separate from the revocation, actually like opposite, like protecting the, you know what I'm trying to say? I just want to make sure that.
Okay.
Real tax levy was one part, the revocation is a different. And they were brought up in concert because one way to get the real tax levy to pass is to guarantee the.
Protect the revocation, like, yeah, like the opposite of. So I just wanted to make sure of that.
I understand what you're saying, Clarissa. Yes. And I believe we are fine.
Yeah, and just saying, I'm saying I am in support of it because I, my husband and me and the breadwinner are moving out, or, you know, traveling out of town. That would make a big deal to us too. So I just wanted to make sure that we were, I was on the same page. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, where was it? Public participation? Anyone else? Meeting adjourned at 8:10.